I think I've seen more than, uh... I could be being kind of hot, but it'd be almost like, uh, some special... It's like a brand new, different, like, apartment. And then they had to stay in the C3.
The board can match up.
Yeah. Because they will, they can C3, it's kind of, or other simply. Yes. Ben?
Exactly, sorry.
Helen, is this you, Ross?
Sorry?
Is this you?
You have a phone number.
Okay, thank you. No one or nobody's answering me. Okay, are we ready, guys? I'd like to call the order, the State Council meeting, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, five on Main Street, five hundred PM. Can we stand with the political allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Men and women, Granton, Eric Walker.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Kathy, Eo, Dave, Anders, Tillman.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Greenwald.
Here.
Seven and five minutes to act. Item number four is mayor correspondence, and I just want you to know if you don't have anything to do this weekend, I'm just gonna give you some right now. Okay, um, Friday, October, well, first of all, if you're all in here and go across the street over here on the corner to the Autumn Sunset Concert, this week the music's provided by Kiakut's own Natalie Proctor and their student, Dr. Casey. Um, it's a great night, we've got two so far this month, um, this is the third, and we're doing this again next, um, Thursday night, so, um, please come down and join us, it's a really nice, um, relaxing evening. Friday, October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Lakewood responds in extreme night in our haunted house at six PM at eight ten Main Street with admission of ten dollars. The Lost Campus is having glow yoga at six to seven PM. The Kiakut Chiefs football game kicks off at seven thirty PM at the Coward Stadium, and there's music by Brazilian at the bar at nine fourteen Main Street, and that starts at nine PM. Saturday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Sweet Sadlers Costume Party, the kids are judged from eleven to five PM, and the adults from five thirty PM to close. Toys for Tots is kicking off their season at two PM with music and magic at the First Christian Church. Kiakut Parks and Red World have Front Fest in Red Park from noon to four thirty PM, and there's Sun For All. Item number four is the Quarterback Training by Iowa Hotline, um, Quarterback James Vanderburg at the YMCA, and it is free to grades six through twelve. Uh, Kitchen Fest at St. Paul Church at twenty-three thirty Plank Road, German food, style of hockey, crafts in a bake cell. An extreme midnight snack at eight ten Main Street will be open again to scare you again at six PM. It's eighties night at Chanel House Bar at seventeen North, uh, Fourth, dress in eighties and come listen to eighties music. Brandon Lawson will be providing music at L20 at eleven oh nine Main Street at nine PM, and Adam Ashes will be making its debut at nine PM in the cellar. Citywide Kiakut Vampires continue to, uh, run through October twenty-sixth, and that is how you get two free vouchers to take two free trips to the landfill here in Kiakut. Um, it's a great project, it's going on for quite a while, Casey does a great job with Kiakut Running. And then last but not least, um, the Salvation Army will begin its bell ringing program starting November eighth through December twenty-fourth at, uh, if you call three one nine five two four one one four four, or sign up online at registry.com, you can sign up to take or turn or ring the bell. This is a great part, project to be part of, people. And as always, me, during the chat, vocal, and kindness matters. Item number five is citizen's request, um, we ask that if you have something you need to speak about, we ask that you come to the podium, you speak, try to keep your, um, comments to three minutes, and, uh, state your name and your address, and who wants to go first?
It used to be five minutes, Kathy. I know. Uh, my name is Erica Barrett, and my address is five eleven North Third, just moved. Uh, I am talking to you as a citizen, but also I am the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and maybe stand a little bit of Christmas thunder with the council liaison report, but we had a really great last couple of weekends collaborating with tourism and Main Street and the Kiakut History Center. We had, um, and the Kiakut School District, and we had so many collaborations, I know I'm missing many, but, um, we're at Kiakut also, we had a Oakley Cemetery Historic Walk, walking tour, which had over a hundred people come, and we had a lot of volunteers, some of which are you, and thank you for that. Um, and then we had this past weekend, a Legends of War Tour, which was a bus tour, a bus provided by tourism, and that was sold out, which was really exciting. And, um, we made, we made money, which is exciting for a fundraiser, and I just personally want to thank the collaborators and board members, volunteers that made that happen. Um, but with that said, I wanted to maybe bring something to the council's attention, not necessarily asking for solutions, nor do I have one, but maybe something to bring to your attention as we get ready for a new city administrator and budget season, the start of next year. Um, I know that tourism, right now, the way that the fund is, is through the hotel motel tax, which is seven percent, and that is a heads and beds model, right, which is the motivation for tourism mostly, because that's where you get a lot of your funding. Um, and I think that sometimes it makes it difficult to have a focus on residents or people here when your metric is heads and beds, and sometimes you have other things rather than tourism that are causing heads and beds, right? You have Rocket, or businesses are coming into town, so it might not be the most accurate of metrics. Um, especially, so I know that the Historic Preservation Commission received a check of about four thousand dollars this year from the hotel motel tax, I'm not sure how that's divided or partitioned, if there's a formula, if there's a percentage based on how many events or activities were brought to town, right? What the motivation is. So, for example, for the Historic Preservation Commission, we worked hard to have these events, and we want to have more, but is there monetary incentive when we get more hotel motel tax, though we're not necessarily putting heads and beds, right? What's the motivation for us to continue, which, for me, it's not really that, but I'm just curious about the formula and how that works out. And then with the hotel motel tax, how is that dispersed? I know that tourism, I spoke with Kirk, and he said that they don't receive all of that funding. Uh, fifty-one percent is designated to tourism, uh, what is the phrase? Projects, or, but that could also be like a road, or if the pool, something breaks, that's part of tourism, and so it's almost like a general fund. And so the question is, how do we ensure that things are going to the right places? I don't know if you guys have a first policy or procedure, who's in charge of that, but that's, that's the question I have, and then maybe how that's divided and how we can motivate organizations to collaborate to create projects and events, not just for out-of-town people, but for our community as well.
So, I can answer that for you, the council will evaluate those every budget season, so they haven't asked them yet how much money is gonna come into that, and then they'll take a look at everybody that comes through here, make a request, and then they'll decide how they disperse those.
Is there a rubric or a metric, like, is there like, they have this many events, or they did this many things, or it's just like?
No.
I like the Preservation Commission, I like what they're doing, so we're getting some more money, or this one has momentum, just kind of arbitrarily, or?
The organization can request an algorithm, and then we review what they're asking for and elect how much to, on each individual request basis.
Okay, and how do you determine that, just based on discussion, or is there?
Better.
Okay, okay. Thank you, so I just, in some, I know everybody's doing what they can, and I am grateful for all of that, and I'm not here to say no one is doing their part, but I also just wanted to maybe have a conversation, or prep people for a conversation in the next coming budget season about how that's done, and how we can work together to maybe have a more equitable, uh, and incentivizing setup, so.
Thanks, Erica.
Thank you, Erica, anybody else?
Hello, my name is Amanda Rogers, I am with the Best U Coalition and the Leadership Group, and the Leadership Team. Um, my address in town is on Plondo, thirteen oh seven, um, my office address at the R YMCA, which is two hundred and sixty Plank Road. Um, I've handed out some handouts that kind of gives you like a brief overview of all the things we're working on, but it's very brief. Um, so I wanted to just point out one thing, October is Red River Week. Um, our kids are working really hard, they're really excited. Um, in that package, there are a couple of events that we have coming up, um, starting tomorrow, we have a Free Family Night at the YMCA at six PM, um, we're gonna be showing the Lorax. This event is run by kids, the kids are gonna talk about Red River Week and why it's important to them to stay, um, drug alcohol-free. Uh, it's gonna be a great time, it's free, people can bring, um, chairs, blankets, snacks, drinks, whatever you like, um, just be a nice make in. Um, the second sheet in there is a contest that the kids helped, uh, me plan. Um, it is for Red River Week, kids can turn in a poster, an essay, or a video about Red River Week, why it's important that we celebrate that and promote that. Um, we have a lot of really great collaborations and donations, which will grant prizes for this contest. The contest is open to all students in sixth through twelfth grade. Um, and entries are to go Friday, October twenty-fifth, um, you can email them, you can drop them off at the YMCA front desk, however they want to get them in. We are also then collaborating on with New Testament Christian Church, or a trick-or-treating event on October twenty-fifth, from five thirty to seven thirty out of the church. Um, the Coalition's gonna be bringing in Hidden Plain Sight, which is a display that talks about, um, things that kids have in plain sight, their parents may not understand or realize what they're looking at or looking for. Um, it's a great interactive display that is brought in by the Hancock Comedy Edition Coalition. Um, we're also gonna have our resource people, and we're providing, um, these really cute free crafts for kids, um, that the kids are gonna be making, and of course, the church has tons of collaborations and other things as part of that major event, lots of candy, so the kids are gonna go home nicely, sugar. Um, I just want to point out, Red River Week is all about collaboration to promote drug-free messaging, um, and it starts, kicks off on Wednesday, October twenty-third, and goes through the third and first. Um, and it strikes during awareness to communities about the importance of you being drug-free. This year's theme is Life is a Movie, They'll Drug-Free, which is my favorite movie night. Um, so we'd love to have your support, I can bring red ribbons for you guys to wear during that week, if you are interested, just let me know, I'm happy to provide those. Thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Margaret, I am Assistant Director of the Best U Coalition, and I'm with Amanda, I live at two twenty-four Morgan, and I have been tasked with discussing the new consumable hemp law. In Iowa, consumable hemp was legalized in two thousand eighteen federally by the Farm Bill, and then in two thousand nineteen by the Iowa Hemp Act, but as of July first, there is a new consumable hemp law on the books. I'm going to just briefly cover the most important parts of that. The biggest, and what we believe at the Best U is the most beneficial aspect of the bill, is that there's not an age restriction, prior to this bill, there was no age restriction on who could purchase hemp products, in Iowa, you have to be twenty-one, just like alcoholic tobacco products. Um, the second part is, the bill does restrict co-conceived consumable hemp products, excuse me, that contain THC, four milligrams per serving, or ten milligrams per gram, um, and then HHS went ahead and defined a serving size of twelve food ounces. A few other components of the law, it increased penalties for violating the law. It prohibits synthetic THC from being sold and produced, it requires warning labels, so similar to what you apply on alcohol or tobacco products. Um, any products that do not meet the legal requirements as of July first, so now they are now considered controlled substances. In Iowa, any retailer in possession of these products are bound not to be compliant, they're considered in possession of controlled substances. It's still legal in Iowa to drive your THC in your system, but anyone over twenty-one can purchase consumable hemp that falls within the guidelines. When Governor Reynolds signed the bill, her comment was, um, that prior to this bill, it was extremely problematic that there was no age restriction on who to purchase this. When she signed the bill, she said that was, you know, the primary goal of the bill, and, um, that's kind of, kind of what we revise at the State Council, and so, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Anybody else?
Hi, I apologize, I'm usually the one that's speaking at these events, so my name is Angela Manning, I am the advocate for DVIPE, RVIP, the Domestic Violence Prevention Program, and the Right Legged Advocacy Program. Uh, this one is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, uh, so we're just here to speak a little bit about our program and what we offer. My office is actually located in Kiakut, but it is an undisclosed address. Um, I run the Transitional Housing in Kiakut, which is called Serenity House, and it provides transitional housing for victims survivors of sexual assault and domestic assault. It gives them a three-month stay rent-free, the only thing they have to provide for themselves is, um, their own food, otherwise we provide everything else, and gives victims survivors a place to kind of rebrew and get, uh, their situations maybe settle for themselves, or they're going from there. Uh, and then we also provide safety planning, twenty-four hour, um, seven days a week advocacy, working with law enforcement, medical, and social services, twenty-four hour safety shelter, trauma-informed peer counseling, support groups, youth services, and emergency pet shelter. Often, um, survivors of domestic violence and, um, sexual assault will not leave their situation because they have pets. We're one of the few programs in Iowa that allow you to take your pet with you to our emergency shelter. We have channels and provide pet care for those in need. We also do local advocacy, for instance, MAM advocacy resources, referrals, housing assistance, community education, technical assistance, creative educational volunteer opportunities. In Kiakut alone in fiscal year of two thousand twenty-four, we have served ninety-three individuals. Um, so I'm just here to let you know that we are in the area and that it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Could you, um, could you come back one day next week, like Monday or something? Usually we do a proclamation for that, if you would like to come, we can do that.
Sure, that's I think what I was supposed to be here for, but I didn't really know, it's my first one, so.
Okay, so usually they call, they go to proclamation, and that type of situation. So if you want to come in Monday, is that Monday a good day in the morning, or?
I'd check, can I?
Yeah, just call that.
Awesome.
Maybe you can go ahead and do a proclamation, get it in the paper.
Absolutely.
Okay, not a problem.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
It's here already. Fifty-nine days of Christmas. Forty-two days, thank you. We got the candidates here on Tuesday. We're gonna open it a day earlier. Four, walk, three, five, one. It's, uh, for two hours. We'll have characters, people out there, that maybe expect to take whatever they want to do. Uh, then we'll put on forever, uh, Thanksgiving night. Couple things we got to tell you about, there will be no missing plenty this year, that's to be Christmas. Name, uh, making this a box, did not see I guy. But, uh, for it is. But, uh, all being walked through, I want to have a group, a church group, that they're seeing for an hour or so. We're trying to, uh, just, uh, to get that up, I'll tell you. So, maybe a little bit different, if people want to take pictures for Christmas, they can do it for the grandparents, whatever, that's what I would do. Uh, of course, again, very, very hard for, uh, I descend, uh, Jackson, not Jackson, no. Top of the tourist one be out there. The sooner something, eight, ten, or five, ten, or fifteen. But, uh, something new we don't find, so I have it. I got some scared for cheer, my own coffee, but, uh...
Joe, we're just getting along this year. Yeah, we're on the side, okay, we all got it. Bob handling the house, uh, but it's tender.
How are you doing with the volunteers for setup this year?
Who?
Volunteers for setup, or, do you need more?
Yeah, need myself, yeah. It's been pretty, uh, it's been, not, it's, uh... We're happy to have a little city, you know, and so we're working there, so we're working with it, so. And then, uh, we do have another contest for lighting display, uh, they're trying to, uh, cater for this year, with the price, I mean, down, but, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, we'll continue to announce that during the council meetings until it's all over, how's that sound? Anybody else? Then we'll move on to item number six, the consent agenda. Regular minutes of the regular city council meeting of October third, two thousand twenty-four. Cash receipts and treasure report for September twentieth, person, camera, two thousand twenty-four. Resolution approving a liquor license for gated city restaurant and bar, twenty-six oh one Main Street, Class C retail alcohol license effective immediately. Resolution approving a liquor license for Southside Road Club, six twenty-five Mississippi River Drive, Class N retail alcohol license without door service effective October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Resolution approving a liquor license for Lost Poms Restaurant, seven oh six Main Street, Class C retail alcohol license effective November first, two thousand twenty-four, pending grant. Reappointment of Peggy Romidian and Richard Moore to the Park and Recreation, advised to be door, term to expire on November second, two thousand twenty-seven. Reappointment of Kathy Joyce and Moxall to the Grand Theater Commission, term to expire November seventh, two thousand twenty-seven. And resignation of Jim Wolf with the Grand Theater Commission, effective November seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Motion to pay bills and transfers listed in registers number five four three four through five four three six. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda?
Agreed. Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number seven, consider resolution approving the aquatic center management agreement with the R YMCA. Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are there any changes in the algorithm else from last year's contract?
No, that's, the changes were put through during the December seventh, two thousand twenty-three council meeting, uh, just going back and correcting, the agreement itself was not included in the council protocol, so the mayor member entered into that, and the changes haven't been made since then, not in the contract document, so it was correct.
So, we authorized the mayor to enter to a contract with the YMCA to manage the city's Kiakut Aquatic Center. Contract provides twenty-five thousand dollar management fee with an additional deficit recovery to have thirty-five thousand. The city will cover any operating deficit that occurred by the manager up to thirty-five thousand. If the overall deficit is less than thirty-five thousand, the city will pay the manager twenty-five percent of the savings from the lower deficit. Any more discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight, consider resolution allowing the mayor to sign the GABI grant agreement for fiscal year twenty-five to the Iowa Department of Transportation, do I have a motion to approve?
Second. Second.
The city of, seeking city council approval to allow the mayor to sign the fiscal year twenty-five general aviation vertical infrastructure, the GABI grant agreement with the Iowa DOT. At the May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting, council meeting, the mayor was authorized by the council to submit this grant, the city was notified, and the grant was approved by funding by the Iowa Transportation Commission on September fifth, two thousand twenty-five. The scope of the work would need to replace the roof on the hangar nine and hangar eight and replace the ceiling sheeting on hangar six A and hangar six B. These hangars have severe structural issues, including water infiltration, mold growth, and corrosion, compromising the safety of the aircraft. compromising the safety of the aircraft and personnel. The total project amount is one hundred and one thousand dollars. Local share would be twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars from budgeted line item zero, zero, one, two, eight, zero, six, three, one, zero, and eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty from the grant. Do we have any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, consider resolution approving the contract with Bolton and Maine of Cedar Rapids, Iowa to perform engineering services for the twenty twenty-five mill and fill project, Tynan East Street, in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Public Works Department solicited various, various engineering firms for the request of qualifications, RFQs for design, engineering, bidding services, and construction of the twenty twenty-five mill and fill project. The project area is Tynan Street from twenty-second to twenty-first, twenty-first to eighteen, eighteen to nine, and ninth to seventh street. The intersections at twenty-second, twenty-first, and nine are newer and will be used as tying locations. The project consists of milling and filling. The engineers recommended an amount of HMA pavement, replacement of the curves where they are needed, addition of ADA pedestrian ramps where needed, and any other design features or concerns to complete the project. This project will go out for bid late winter, early spring of two thousand twenty-five. After reviewing the RFQs, the Public Works Department recommends hiring Bolton and Maine of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for the proposed cost of thirty-five thousand dollars. Is there any more discussion?
I have one question. How many other engineering firms submitted the RFQs?
We have a total of four.
Total of four. Was this the lowest estimate?
They are not price-based. Under the Iowa code, we're not allowed to solicit engineering services based on price and to qualification base.
So what made this your choice?
Uh, we have a group of American rubrics that myself and our team of engineers text scored independently. And the scores are in the, this firm scored the highest based on, based on their qualifications and timeline.
Okay, has there been a change in the resolution reads that includes from twenty-second through seventh street? In some of the paperwork that received in our packet, your letter that you sent out requesting the RFQs indicates that same amount. But in our exhibit A that we have in our packet and in the contract summary page and on the agreement for professional services, which I am assuming would be a lead-up to the contract with the firm, is that correct?
So their contract should have been included there as a separate document from their proposal.
Okay, all three of those pages that I listed beside your letter indicate that the project resurfacing is from twenty-second street to ninth street, not seventh street.
Well, we will always have based on our, based on what we sent out. And the meeting we had with Bolton, they, they, they know that's one of the seven.
And we're certain of that.
The only way it wouldn't is if we had to cut that because of finances. As a regular, that's almost certain.
So I can be guaranteed that any paperwork committing them to this project will be from twenty-second through seventh street, not ninth street.
But then we bring the plans for proof to council and the plans that will always have.
Okay, is it customary for a request for qualifications, uh, reply from a firm usually include an, an opinion of probable costs?
Um, some firms do, some firms don't. Um, I think Bolton was the only one that gave a cost opinion with their, with their proposal.
So it's pretty certain that they made that opinion based on twenty-second through seventh street. We won't come up too much short.
Correct. There's also, man. So we, uh, we're in the process of putting together an ADA transition plan with the city and we're going to ask the council to adopt, which is going to allow the city to do these overlay projects without having pedestrian ramps. So they're taking the cost that's in that packet also included all the pedestrian ramps. Those are going to be removed from this project. So that cost opinion is going to go down drastically from what I think it was like one point three million. Then we're going, we're going to be closer to like eight hundred thousand for the overlay.
Why would we reduce our commitment to people with disabilities?
It's not that we're reducing our, so the ADA transition plan is going to be a citywide plan of replacing intersection ramps that don't currently have that. And we're going to, we're going to implement that plan as soon as we get, soon as the engineering firm puts it together for us. That's going to allow us to spend on the street planning on the streets. And then we'll do a overlay during a separate. When we get around to doing the ADA compliant ramps, that'll be a separate budgeted item. So like when the council budgets or the bronze for five million dollars for a roadrunner, we will be able to use that, those monies for the actual roadrunner and we'll actually include ADA compliant ramps.
So then the ramps would be coming out of street department or?
Um, when we get, when we get the plan put together, we'll have, uh, we'll have a public works committee meeting and discuss the, kind of rate, the rate, the hierarchy of where we need to do ramps first. And then we'll have a discussion on how we want to budget for those. Um, there's numerous ways we can do it. So right now, if we do, when we do overlay projects, we're only taking off anywhere from two to four inches of asphalt, which in a lot of, which in a lot of cases in town does not allow us to do any compliant ramps anyways because we're not doing any grading to the curb line or to the actual sidewalks in between the ramps. So we will be doing, even if we do pedestrian ramps, we still have to file to the DOT for compliant ramps. So what we'd like to do is make them all to be able to be compliant to a level that's more effort by the engineering and construction side.
Okay.
Brian, is the, uh, is the cost for this resolution, this is kind of not of the five million that we bought?
Yes.
Is that the five million under the budget, so?
Yeah.
Is there like an update? So we're asking how much of that budget is actually left?
Yep, we actually, when we pay, I don't think this is the day before we asked that question ahead of the meeting, but um, the short answer is after we've done West Avenue and North Fifteenth, the intersection of Decatur and Boulevard, and, uh, Eighteenth Street is under the five million. When those are all completed, um, we will have two million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars out of this current grant.
Excellent, thank you.
So the, the grand avenue, do we have an idea of what that was projected to cost?
Uh, the initial cost estimate for it was around seven hundred and sixty thousand. That was kind of early on. I haven't had enough data from the engineer. The last night with them, they were supposed to have about ninety percent plans ready in November, December, and then we'll have an update of the cost along with this.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number eleven, consider resolution approving the filing of the grant application through the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, for ground field cleanup grant funding. Oh, I skipped number ten, sorry guys. I think the other one was more fun. Consider the resolution setting the public hearing to consider granting a permanent encroachment to Keyahuck Community School District for block, for a block retaining wall and concrete pad to accommodate bleachers. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
The Keyahuck Community School District, five hundred North Second Street, has requested a permanent encroachment, encroachment permit to construct a ten by fifty concrete pad with a block retaining wall to set bleachers on. The request is to construct the pad on the west side of the tennis courts in the grassy area between the public sidewalk and the tennis courts. A public hearing is required and will be scheduled for November seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Do we have any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number eleven, consider resolution approving the filing of the grant application through the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, for brownfield cleanup grant funding in the amount of one million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. Motion to approve.
A move.
A third grant application is being prepared for submission to the US EPA Brownfield Cleanup Grant Program for the former Alcam Carbide South Parcel located at three hundred and sixty-five Carbide Lane. And I do believe Zach is here to talk to us a little.
Sure. Uh, here is Zach James, I'm the regional planning commission. Uh, hopefully y'all got a map like this and I'll start with that. So, uh, what we're looking at is, is the third grant application. This is a map we put together early on to kind of piece up the site into chunks. Um, we're only allowed one grant for basically partial. So we need to come up with a strategy to split this up so we can do multiple grant applications opposed trying to do one for the entire site. So, uh, what we've done to date in the fall of two thousand twenty-two, we applied for a grant for what's shown on that map as a lot of one. And hopefully you guys have these checks right here, these big checks these guys got, so you can see that. So there was a two million dollars for that. And that, that project actually takes for now, we're starting to really get things moving here. So hopefully kind of spring some of that here, we'll get to the cleanup portion of that grant application. So that was the first one. And then, uh, last fall, we applied for what's shown on here and talked to the center portion of the site. And that's this check over here for just under four and a half million dollars. So what we're looking at here for this grant application, and this is probably the last one we would apply for. Uh, this is, uh, what's shown on here is lots of three and four, so kind of a U shape around that lot too. Uh, and what we're requesting, that one million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, just for purposes of the application, we go through real quick kind of what that budget breakdown is. Uh, we have four different tasks and one is cooperative agreement oversight. Uh, that's approximately one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, part of this will require to go to the brown case conference, same way, there's one person, um, to go to that. So we've traveled in there for that, helps cover our costs. We do allow the grant district, so the quarterly reporting, uh, kind of the contact between EPA, selecting, on the, just kind of all the, the inner workings of the grant and make sure we follow all the rules and regulations. And the, what we call the QBP, that's the environmental consultant. They have a little bit of money in, in that, uh, task as well. Task two is community engagement so one way. And all of these grants for EPA, they require you to do some community outreach efforts. Some of that is kind of the council meetings, so the separate, um, uh, kind of outreach meetings that we put together, putting brochures together, managing a website. There's, it's actually already out there, but we just continue to maintain that and update that. So that's all part of that community engagement task, it's sixty-five thousand, nine hundred. There's a task three cleanup planning, uh, it's a hundred and thirteen thousand, two fifty. That's for the environmental, mainly for the environmental consultant as part of this whole process. Um, we're taking these, uh, these different portions through the Iowa Department of Land Recycling Programs, basically a program that they have to, to make sure that the site meets certain environmental standards and can be back able to reuse for, um, certain purposes, whether it's commercial, industrial, residential, whatever the target is, we're trying to get to, the different standards for how much you have to clean it up. So that's to help that environmental consultant pay for those costs and to manage that cleanup process and to make sure that we're making those requirements all the way so that the property can be back able to use. And then task four, that is the actual cleanup cost itself, which are projected to be one million, six hundred and ninety thousand, two fifty. Some of that is for the actual contractor to go out and clean up. And some of that's for the environmental professionals to do the bidding process, to, um, do some upfront kind of testing to make sure everything that they've already tested is still what, what it was a few years ago. And that actually when they need to clean up, do follow-up testing to make sure it meets the standards, uh, that it's supposed to meet. So altogether, those make that up to that one million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred dollars that we're applying for. And ultimately, what we're doing, uh, primarily for this, uh, cleanup is on that lot three, there's a whole bunch of just unused coal that's several feet deep in there. And so it's the recovery, redistribution of those, what they call combustible materials. And then on lot four, primarily to the south of that big building, there's a whole bunch of, uh, uh, contaminated soil with, basically they know the PAH, it's the reco metals, uh, to the south of the building. So basically they're going to come in, remove that soil, take it to a landfill, put it clean fill on top of it. There's a few other kind of things here and there, but those are the two primary things. So that's all what the grant application is for. Uh, no local match required for this. We put in the grant application that the city will commit, makes other shaft time to, to be a part of the application with no local dollars going to it. Other than that, there's something in between, like, right now, we have to get a flat down for to show this is going to be its own parcel, it's going to be the city will, other than that, no local match required. So once you guys have other questions, appreciate your time. Hopefully we get other ones.
Thanks, sir.
We need another check.
Yeah, we need another one. Great, I'm here for it.
Yeah, thank you so much, Matt. Any more discussion, guys? All those in favor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any council liaisons on your boards?
Um, I have, I have something, it's not really a liaison report. Uh, Erica already graciously covered my liaison report on how well the events went for the historical preservation. So thank you. And, um, the other thing I have isn't a liaison report, but it does pertain to the Aquatic Center. Um, so I'm the treasurer for the Golden Oak Society and, uh, the Golden Oak Society recently held their fourth quarter meeting and the Keyahuck Aquatic Center was awarded the grant this time. So a project application was presented for funding to replace some old and worn-out, uh, pool lounge chairs. The new chairs will be purple and white, so stay tuned and keep an eye out for those next summer when the pool opens. So that's exciting news.
Item number thirteen, staff reports.
I want to create a new amendment.
Okay. Item number fourteen, new business. Item number fifteen, I need a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's go home.